I call to order the meeting of Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in special session on Monday, May 6, 2019, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas at 5:31 PM. Board members present are Mrs. Nilda Sullivan, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, and myself, Marisol Quijano. Board members absent at this time are Mr. Fred Roberts and Mrs. Vicki Morgan. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that a notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Statute 551. The invocation will be given by Mrs. Sullivan and the pledges by Mr. Bailey.
Would you please join me in vouching for it? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us each day. We thank you for our district and for the educational that it provides each one of our students. We thank you for our teachers and our administrators who lead them in that effort. We ask that you would be with us as we conduct the business of this district. Be with those who fight and support our country and protect us. Keep them ever in the center of thy hand. We ask that you would lead and guide and direct us. Keep us ever in the center of thy will. These things we ask in thy name. Amen.
So you place an American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the state flag.
On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
We will now go into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee concerning the matters related to the superintendent's recommendations to hire administrative personnel, considering matters related to the superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, nonrenewals, and terminations of contracts for professional personnel. 551.071, to consult with district attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the code of professional responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act. When the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. And let the record indicate that Mrs. Morgan is present for the meeting. We will reconvene in open session shortly. Thank you. Now reconvene at 6:27 and let the record indicate that Mr. Fred Roberts arrived during closed session. So everyone is present.
The world is safe again.
That brings us to item number four, consideration of possible approval of administrative personnel.
Madam President, I move that we approve addenda pages A through F.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I'd like, yes, I'd like to introduce these and certainly welcome them to our district or their new position. We just approved Ms. Elizabeth Escamilla Osavez. Is Ms. Osavez here? Is that, did I say your name right? Osavez?
Acevez.
Acevez, okay. Ms. Acevez has been named counselor, parent coordinator at Garfield Elementary, and we congratulate you. And you have family with you you'd like to introduce this to?
My son Giovanni. Hi.
Hi.
My name's Samantha, my sister's Hannah.
Glad you all are here. And you're new to our district, so we welcome you.
Coming back, coming back.
Oh, coming back to our district. So we welcome you home. Next is Nilda Salinas. Is it?
Hey, Nilda.
Nilda has been named counselor, parent coordinator at South Houston Elementary. Congratulations. And you have family with you?
I have my daughter, Governor Watanabe, and my husband, John Salinas.
Very good. Next, we have Sylvia Medina Bargarena. Okay. And is she, I have been told she is not here this evening, is that correct?
That is correct. She's out in Brownsville.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Certainly congratulate her, as her position of diagnostician in special ed. We also have Alba Iris Valdez, and she is not here this evening either, unless I'm mistaken. And she is going to be also a diag in special ed, and we congratulate her. Christina Lee Garcia, congratulations. Christina has been named as a position on, to a position on the behavior response team, as a behavior response team specialist, and congratulations in your new position. Do you have family with you?
I do. I have my daughter, Harlow, and my husband, Juan Perez.
And last but not least, we have Michael Camer, is that correct?
Camer.
Camer?
Yes.
Okay. And Michael has been named behavior response team specialist with special ed, and we certainly congratulate you in your new position. Do you have family with you?
No, they weren't here.
Okay, all right. Congratulations to all of these.
Congratulations once again. Welcome to Pasadena ISD, and that's a beautiful name, Harlow, actually. And we welcome all of you, and for those of you supporting our new employees, this is a great time to slip out if you would like to.
Slip.
Or you can stay. It's up to you. You're more than welcome to spend the night with us.
So, can y'all pick your place, and then we'll, yeah, come back. Y'all want to pick your place, and then we'll come back.
Okay, we're getting it out.
If you haven't signed anything.
Deanna said she would check. This is the spreadsheet I had made. Thank you. She said she'll check it out. I don't remember, turn around the paper. If it isn't, I missed it, I'll fix it.
They were the location to vote this way.
Where's that?
Yeah, I know.
This area covered. This area.
But I don't recall it on the sheet for whatever reason, but if it is, I'll fix it.
I was just looking at it, and I was looking at the big numbers, but it would have been, you know.
And then on the bottom is the percentages.
Right.
In order.
Exactly.
But if it is, I'll fix it. I had the girl in the office read them to me, and then I went and checked it. But I know it was a voting place, but I don't recall it on the sheet.
Well, this, all this really is saying is, they, this is, they didn't vote here. Nobody voted at Fortview. At Fortview. No, they didn't vote there, but that's where they live. You know, the South Houston thing matches up real close.
Well, it's like the four. These four down here?
Yeah.
These neither. So what's that mean?
I don't know, because up on the top, oh, I thought there was a South Houston, that's South Houston already. I thought it was, I don't know.
Other than that, like, one vote at the bottom or something?
The numbers match.
Like, these four didn't have any?
The numbers match somehow, and maybe.
All of them that are there, they're the ones that she gave us on that bunch.
And, you know, see like Bondi, see all the precincts that Bondi covers? And they're over here several times. This is just showing where the people, maybe what, maybe what precinct, this is showing, maybe what, I don't know, what precinct, it's got, you would think it was Harris County precinct, wouldn't you? I bet it is, because the South Houston was 29 and 95.
This is the county precinct.
Right.
This is the precinct.
Right.
And the voting place.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Does she have a, not a hard copy where you kind of?
She has these red shows.
Okay.
That's good information.
If she wants it, I'll fix it up. I'm going to email it to you anyway.
Jack, we have tea.
We have tea.
We have tea?
All right. Now all I've got to do is get the address to the boy on the line.
Oh, it's the 1-2. But it's a span.
It's a thousand miles.
It's going to take a month. How long? Speed? It's taking four. We need this stuff to come to me. It's getting busy. Did you? Oh. Very, very, very. We're blessed, we're blessed. She's the only child, and she's the only child. Because I don't have two feet like that old. Marisol. You know. Those people make jokes. Did you need something? The relief neck. Thank you. No. I'm a great, so, yes, you're a very good. I was about to tell you. Maybe a couple. It's not funny. It's not funny. It's hard to find. I got one, definitely, thank you. I missed you the other night. I really, really missed you. I really did.
Thank you, appreciate my fish.
Thank you for everything that you did. I know. Yeah, clean brief. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, doing it again.
Jack was asking me, because I put something, I made this sheet right here. Did she show you the sheet I made?
I don't have today. Uh huh. I'll look back tomorrow. We'll see.
I gave Deanna a bunch of copies, you can give her to you.
I went running for the first time in about four weeks.
Jack was, where's Turner's? I go, I copied everything from that sheet.
Because I've had poison ivy this whole time.
Turner's on?
Shake it. Poison ivy?
No.
Really? Where's it at? Like, I've had it here since day one, and I had it really on here, but, you know, just kind of like that, the hot spots. Where'd you get it?
Thank you.
At church on a workday?
Mm-hmm.
Really?
Wait, he just gave me a water. He had a water in his hand, he left.
And I kept wondering, I just want to double check, is this poison ivy, and they're like, I take them out there, and they're like, no, no, that's not poison ivy, and I'm like, okay.
Had you ever had it before?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That's why, and, you know, I kept pulling it up, and I'm looking at it, and I'm like, that's not the same. Let's pull up. Ivy, sumac, and, and oak.
If you got oak trees, you got poison ivy. You know, the sides. I had nephews that were so allergic to it, they could, they could be downwind of somebody burning something.
My mother was so.
I guess I'm getting to that point.
I have that Laura.
That's why I'm running the ladies room. I'm so glad about that.
Do you like pepperoni, Elise?
I like cheese. I'm kind of a. I'm sorry. Does Lauren get to keep, does she get to keep the 25? Oh, that's awesome.
Tell them we did, go with the case.
They pay her a thousand the day they leave their school. Oh, wow. So 26,000. That's awesome. That's neat.
Good for her.
She is. Nobody knows better than I do. Susan, is there water?
She did a wonderful job.
She's the one that just. I'm sorry, I can't look at the investigation. She was dealing with Jim. She was pulling out. Oh, who didn't see it?
Oh, really? What, you need the brownie?
I think he was going to go get it, but I stopped him. I stopped you, I know I stopped you. He wouldn't even come out.
You get the pizza?
Besides, I tried to.
There's a situation, Kirkwood, too.
Yep. Can y'all give me the precinct number on that? Thank you. Okay. Are you ready? I think so.
You're a tireful, but you're right for you.
Item number five, consideration of possible approval of contract renewals 2019-20, pages 3 through 121. So move. Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Sullivan, a second by Mrs. Morgan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, consideration of possible approval of the additional personnel positions for the 2019-20 school year, page 122.
So move. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
So board members, in just a few minutes, we're going to go through your first official viewing of where we're at in the budget. We're not finished. We're going to talk about where we've come from and where we've landed as of now. As you know, the state legislature is in session. Even today was a big day of discussion on House Bill 3 by the Senate. We're going to talk about what that would mean for PISD if the House bill was passed or if the Senate bill was passed. We're going to give you some numbers today to look at, but we have to build a budget based on what we know true now.
Absolutely.
So we're going to kind of discuss that. Three areas that we're focusing on for next year is making sure we have all of our early college high school staff since that class is rolling up. We'll have three campuses attending San Jac Central, so no longer it will just be the PHS kids. We'll have hundreds of kids at San Jac Central, and then a couple of hundred kids at San Jac South next year, and we need to be staffed and ready for that. Another area of focus, as you know, is mental health and safety. So we're going to continue to try to improve in those areas as far as coverage, so you'll see additional police officers. And then, of course, the other area is special education. So there's one position there that is greatly needed at Sam Rayburn High School, just based on the sheer numbers of ARDs that that campus alone is performing is greater than what we've experienced in past years, and we need someone to assist in that area. Definitely needed. So I don't know if you want to take action now or if you want to come back after we discuss, it's up to you, but these are positions that you know with your experience on the board have trickle effects. If I hire someone for the position of safety director, that may come from other ranks, or if I hire someone for early college dean, that may come from other ranks. So these are the positions that we felt we wanted to bring to you first and then leave all other ask or wants until we hear about where the legislature's going.
The early college dean, is, do we have that position at this time?
We have deans at the campus, and this would be one at San Jac Central and one at San Jac South to manage the day-in, day-out operations of those students, discipline, attendance, parent communication, talking with San Jac, facilitating those things. Karen knows a lot about this because she's been in more meetings than I have, even though I've attended numerous and can give you a lot of detail.
One thing I was just going to add to what she was saying is that in the past, Aldo was the dean at PHS, and he is daily driving back and forth and taking care of things at, at the college, and that has not been super efficient with his time, and we feel like with that many students located there, we want somebody on site at all times, and so they'll help with all of those things that she just mentioned, and will be there all the time. The deans will still be coming over and helping and assisting with those students, but this will actually be the dean of Central and the dean of South, and will be doing all of those management pieces, and will be on site.
Have we had any issues of student problems over the?
We haven't had the numbers that we're about to have since it was just PHS. Last year, senior class was only about 29, this year was 56, but we're going to be talking about 300 at Central next year and 200 at South, right about that.
A little over both of those numbers.
Okay, so I'm low there on my estimates, but you can tell that's going to take more management than a smaller class that we've experienced.
Then it'll double the next year.
Elementary school, you'd get them a system, a system at Bristol, too, I guess.
At 400, we would, but don't, don't say that in front of Karen.
We'll be friends.
I think it's great. I think it's great. And the guy that you mentioned, his name, that.
Aldo Prado.
Yeah, he's, you know, he is, he is a great story, and he is a great employee for this district.
Yes.
Well, I make the motion that we accept this, as y'all oppose.
Second.
We actually have a first and a second.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, we have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan.
Right about a third.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number seven, consideration of possible approval of the superintendent's recommendation to propose a nonrenewal of the term contract of Lou Russell, fashion designer instructor at Pasadena High School, effective at the end of the 2018-19 school year, in accordance with the board declared program change and the reduction of forest policy and related actions.
Madam President, I move to accept and adopt the superintendent's recommendation to propose the nonrenewal of the term contract of Lou Russell, fashion design instructor at Pasadena High School, as presented and discussed in executive session, and further move that Ms. Russell be provided notice by the superintendent of this board's action.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, budget workshop.
All right. Well, like I said, I'm going to kind of give you the brief rundown of where we've been and where we're headed in the budget process. This is your first kind of look at the actual budget documents, but we began this process in October. In early October, we noticed that our enrollment projections were not coming to fruition, which was worrisome, to say the least. It had declined, and we looked at reasons for that, whether it was housing that was impacted by Harvey or other reasons. And of course, we calculated our ADA for this year based on what we think we know for sure we will attain next year, so hopefully it's conservative. But this decline showed us having quite a bit of loss, so we were looking at staffing campus by campus, our ASCDs working with Tony and others. Carla, for example, were kind of scrutinizing each and every personnel unit, whether it was teacher units or administrative or paraprofessional units at each campus, as well as we were doing that with our budgets as well. We continued to look at not only staff at the central office and department level, but the stuff budgets. We started zero-based budgeting this year, where departments had to come in and discuss each cost or each expenditure associated with their department and their role in the district. We put in a placeholder of a 2% at the midpoint salary increase, so you're going to see that in our budget proposal, which we all know is right around 7.5. Is that right, Carla, shaking your head at me? But we, again, don't know what our state legislature is going to do, whether we're going to see something like what you saw in Senate Bill 4, where they proposed the $5,000 raise for teachers and librarians, or if you're going to see something closer to what's in House Bill 3, which is about an $1,800 raise for those nonadministrative positions. So again, it's a wait and watch. I'm going to give you a side-by-side comparison of the Senate bill and the House bill, so you can look at those and see some of the differences. You'll see in this budget, and this is on page 130 to 136, because I started, Carla put in here the first original October draft, and you can see from that, if you go to page 124, when we got the items that I talked about, we were at a $24 million deficit. So that didn't help me sleep at night or give me a warm, fuzzy feeling. So we've been working diligently since then. Again, we've cut about 75 teacher positions based on the current enrollment, which was a savings of about 4.6 million. We've looked at our taxes, we've looked at, of course, the impact of the Lyndell payment being increased by about $100,000. We've monitored our ADA, and I do want to give kudos to our campuses. Our ADA, that's our daily attendance, is up. And that means helping our bottom line. So when you go to page 130, moving forward, this is our current deficit, so 9.2 million. Again, that has in it the 2% raise, which is about 7.5. So I don't know if I want to just hand these down, I want to talk about a few things. You'll hand those that way. This is just to let you know fund balance, so I will not go over it in detail, but you can see where we sit at the end of 2018 on fund balance. And just to be fun, the red is during my superintendency. The blue might be during a previous superintendent, and the green might be previous to him. And then on that last page is just kind of a comparison, so you can see a visual of our fund balance, where we've come since 1994, so where we sit in 2018. Not that we don't want to continue to build that, but we know we have the requirement of 12.5%, and of course, we want to do even better. The other thing I'm going to pass out just for you to have in reference is the side-by-side comparison, and this is of the House bill and the Senate bill.
Where are they leaning on that thing, you believe?
It's so hard to tell. The last I heard, they were leaning toward the House bill, but putting in additional testing, and anyone that's heard anything more recent, writing at the third grade, they want to put in a component where they tie funding to your third grader's performance, which, if they're going to tie funding to somebody's performance, I want it at the upper grades, when I've had more time to develop skills and language, and you know where our kids compete at and how they compete, and we want to have as much time as we can to help them be successful. But again, what are some of the other items that they're still discussing? The incentive pay for teachers to work in those more difficult, low-income, high-poverty schools. So even though that might be a plus for us, we've all been either on the board or in a position in the district when incentive pays were part of the game, and those have never really played in our favor, even though they sounded good, they didn't lead to a lot of collaboration or a lot of collegiality that we see now. So that is worrisome, and so we continue to monitor that. So those are just some of the components of House Bill 3 that was, of course, proposed by Huberty, and Senate Bill 4, which was proposed by Larry Taylor.
But if you look at that $5,000 teacher raise, that would only be for two years.
It would be funded for two years.
Right.
That's correct.
And then we'd be stuck with having to.
Sustain.
Hunt money to make up that difference.
So those are just some of the components of House Bill Three that was, of course, proposed by Huberty and Senate Bill Four, which was proposed by Larry Taylor.
But if you look at that $5,000 teacher raise, that would only be for two years.
It would be funded for two years.
Right.
That's correct.
And then we'd be stuck with having to...
Sustain.
Hunt money to make up that difference.
And that's why you're not going to see a lot of districts. I know HISD has just come out and said they have no raises planned for next year, but you're not seeing a lot of districts even talk about raises. We've tried, we've asked, and everyone's just sitting back waiting to hear. We put a 2% placeholder in because we want to at least know what that would cost and what impact that would be for all employees. That's not just for teachers, that's all of our employees. But again, we sit back and kind of wait, also not wanting to pull the trigger until we hear more, because you would hate to propose a raise and then be mandated to give $5,000 in addition to that and then not be able to financially cover it.
I'd rather them give us money, let us decide where we spend it.
Yeah, that's not going to happen, though, I don't think.
That's what happened with Bill Three, wasn't it?
That is in House Bill Three, but you have to spend 25% of your additional BFU funding. So you can see the BFU funding or the basic allotment in House Bill Three is at 630, which it helps. And then you can see, of course, over here, the increase in basic allotment is to be determined, but I think it was right at 1,800, Carla? About 1,800 for House Bill. Let me give you one more thing, if I can find it here. Y'all have seen all this at Ad Council when you're sitting up here wondering what I'm handed to them. This is all documents we went over at Ad Council. So this first slide, I showed this at Ad Council just recently, and if you go up third from the bottom, this is House Bill Three, and based on what Moke and Casey has run, our numbers, we'd have an additional $41 million, okay? Above and beyond what we have currently revenue-wise. So $41 million. If you turn the page to Senate Bill Four, you go up third from the bottom and you go all the way over to the right, that last column is saying we'd have an additional $15 million to what we currently have. So do you all want to take a vote on which one you want? I wish we could. But that's just to give you some background of what we're waiting and watching to hear. And a lot of people in this room have worked on this budget and continue to work. This is by no means the final draft. We're going to continue to look at every single item and where we can cut and what we need to do to make that deficit smaller. But we have our Carla here and Bethany here that can answer any questions. We have our ASCDs that worked on staffing, Karen's here. So if there's any questions you have about a particular area, we can definitely answer your questions.
Have we made, have we talked about, I know starting salaries are still something that, you know, we had talked about last year that we would continue to look at. Are we pretty competitive or where are we on that?
We're in the middle.
We're about in the middle where we've always been.
Okay.
We're not at the top, we're not at the bottom, so about middle for region four.
Be nice if we get additional money, if we could boost that a little bit so that we could have a little bit of an edge.
Carla, did we put in here the additional for the substitutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's where we were not competitive, so we put about $5 per group, whether they were certified, non-certified, so whether that was teacher, paraprofessional. So we did add $5 for all substitute groups.
An hour or a day?
A day.
Okay.
A day.
What do they make now?
Not much.
You know, they vary depending on the position. Like therefore, our child nutrition workers or the custodians, they were $8 an hour. We were really struggling because the surrounding districts are 10, so we increased that one to 10. And so theirs is a little different. If they were sub that's non-certified, those were 70, and so we bumped those up. We had some that were 75, some that were at 85, and some that are not. It depends on their skill set. So we looked at how many days they currently served and that's positions, and those are the ones that we increased, especially on our high-need areas.
We also looked at starting pay for custodians, not substitutes, but custodians, because we were totally uncompetitive there. And we didn't bump up those higher experience years, but we did with the starting pay. Actually, our custodians with the more senior years are well-paid compared to their peers in other districts, but that starting pay was an issue. So we looked at that and that's part of the budget proposal as well that'll come further down the road.
Yeah.
I'm sure you have. Have your principals gone back to check their programs to see which programs are struggling student-wise versus which ones need to stay intact? When you've got a classroom with six kids in it, the principals are the ones that make the decision?
Yes, I mean, the example is Program RIF something today that was not showing the numbers that it needed to justify the position. So they have. I know that we've looked at that mainly at the high school campuses. We've had anywhere from 14 cuts down to about four, three or four cuts, depending on which high school you're talking about and the enrollment numbers. So which, what are you flashing at me? Four? Mm, CTHS didn't have five. Okay. I was going to say, I didn't remember that. So anywhere from four to 14 cuts. So they had to go back and do exactly what you're talking about and decide, prioritize and decide what was getting the numbers to cover those positions.
I think, was it CTHS, they were losing people in that maritime?
They have worked hard on that. Steve, do you have any update on their maritime numbers for next year?
You know, I think everybody here at the table realizes that that's a great industry to get into.
It's hard to sell.
It's doing well to a 17-year-old kid, you know, to a 14-year-old kid.
We got one. We got one. Troy's son's in it next year.
Is he?
We got one!
And actually, we have the billboard person from San Jack that's a product of Pasadena. But to answer your question, it is a hard sell. We continue to have industry that's wanting us to churn out some graduates and we've continued to try to make the program more appealing. And it is something that we struggle with to get the kids in there, but the numbers are growing.
We just have the one instructor, Captain Green. But we do, we evaluate them definitely.
Steve?
Yes, sir.
Is the maritime program that you have, is it primarily for captains or for people on tug?
It's the whole gamut.
What's needed in maritime?
Yes, sir, the entire gamut.
The logistics, the work in the dock.
Logistics, the longshoreman, everything. They actually get their initial certification to work on the dock, their safety and all that other stuff through the course.
Well, they know, they use welders, they use forklift drivers, they use everything like that.
Yes, sir. We have the equipment and we have a state-of-the-art wheelhouse over there for those that are doing the navigation part.
Didn't San Jack kind of reneg on helping us with that when we originally started?
Yes.
Yep. Take $3 million.
That might not be my place to answer that.
I remember it.
There were some discussions about partnerships and Troy was involved in those that did not come to fruition, but we've been able, through either donations or part of the BFU, not, I'm saying that wrong, the startup monies, either through the startup monies or through the donations to get that program exactly where we wanted it to be. But it was not done through that partnership we had hoped for.
Yeah.
The Port of Houston has been a wonderful help in adding to that program, and so they have been a great partner as well.
Good.
Well, San Jack should be, and so should A&amp;M Galveston. I mean, that's a direct feeder to get these kids out and, you know, be pilots and make 250,000, 300,000 starting out.
Well, Fran...
It's a culture, I understand. They don't like being gone, they're family-oriented, when you're talking about 20 days a month going home and then fit with their family life.
That's a big part of it.
It's a big problem. I understand.
Yeah. Well, and there are a lot of facets to it.
Yes, sir.
Fran and Carrie Bass's oldest son is one of the youngest captains on the Port of Houston. And he would be a great guy to come and help us with that, and I'm sure he would. He's a graduate of Rayburn.
What do we, is CTHS, is one of their programs, do they have anything to do with the refineries as far as operators and so on and so forth now?
Petrochemical or...
Yeah, I know St. Santa College is building some unit out there at Central Campus.
Actually, we just revamped one of the HVAC courses to be more in line with the operator, system operator that the plants are asking for, and we've channeled some of the classes to be more in tune with that certification.
And then we have the processing class, process tech.
Process technology.
Process technology. And we have that at Rayburn as well.
You know, those classes, I don't want to get rid of anybody, you know, through RIF or whatever the case. And so those areas that we see that there's a possibility on or see a future with or whatever the case may be, might be area we might have to move people over to work on that kind of stuff. Operators do pretty well.
Real well.
And she's a banker, she used to collect her checks on the weekend. They don't have the old contract they used to have though now. They retired pretty well.
So we're not asking for any action tonight, but it was time of year to start talking about this and start thinking about areas in which we need to look. So if you have any questions or direction you want to give, you can give it this evening or you can, of course, give it later. We're going to continue to work on it and probably bring it back to you at another special call meeting and then probably throughout the summer until we land on a final decision of what we'd like to propose.
I want to compliment you on the zero budget. I think that that was the way to go, to let them build that budget themselves.
And Carla spent a lot of time and Bethany meeting with people. I know they came in and met with my staff and, "Why do we have to do this? Why do we have to do that? We just want to spend that." So it was a learning experience for everyone.
Yeah.
We've been talking about zero budgeting for a long time and always were assured that that's basically what we were doing, but we all knew that had gone to any of the sessions that we attended on the zero-based, it didn't seem like that's what was being done. So I also am pleased with the outcome.
And it was just departments, not campuses.
Yeah.
But it was definitely a learning experience for us all. Some of them darn it went up. And Karen's like, "Well, you made me do that zero-based budgeting and that's what I need, so I'm picking on you tonight."
I didn't say it exactly like that.
Wasn't that nice? Just be careful that you don't get recorded. Sherry recorded my comments the other night. They'd come back to haunt me. My problem, daughter.
Yes, yes.
So any questions or other comments?
Well, they are moving in the right direction.
Exactly. Yes, and we will continue to scrub and scrape and we'll come back and hopefully, you know, if May 27th is the last day they're in session and they don't have a special session, did y'all hear anything about special session today at Impact?
They don't think so.
Okay, then we should have some answers fairly soon, and that'll give us a lot of information we can move forward on.
Well, even if they work between the Senate, House Bill Three and Senate Bill Four, I think that'd be kind of work together, merge that.
I mean, I'll just say it and I can do this. I'd like to see the testing reevaluated. I don't think that's what's best for kids. Larry Taylor, and I'll say this on film, he goes around the state talking about our personalized learning, and personalized learning has nothing to do with STAR. If he wants to have a conversation with Dr. Hickman and I about map testing or progress testing of children, we would love to sit down and have that conversation at any time because the two do not go hand in hand. And so you can't say one and then act on another.
Right.
And have you told him that?
We are telling him that and we're going to continue to tell him that. Karen and I are going to continue to work that avenue.
Good.
How much success do you think's been going on with Larry and his group? A lot of feedback from a lot of superintendents like yourself regarding this unfair test.
Well, I think, you know, the Texas...
Two years ahead of their grade level.
The Texas School Alliance has done a good job communicating that and getting the facts out, whether you saw the article in the New York Times or whether you saw local articles in the Chronicle and others. I know there's a tweeting war going on right now about the schools being tested on a test. Most recently, there was some inappropriate language that was in one of the STAR tests.
I apologize.
Oh, well. So the validity of the test is definitely in question. And if they haven't heard that, I think the disappointment from the superintendents is that our own commissioner, who should be looking at this seriously and making recommendations, hasn't done that. And so again, I think there's some concerns about that role and about that individual not seeing that this is a problem for the children of Texas.
Absolutely.
It's definitely a problem.
If they're going to be on the same grading level with other states, they'll show that.
I agree.
They're not afraid of me.
He said it.
Any other comments?
I did have a question on the new positions. The police officers, how many officers are we talking about adding?
Well, I'd like to add three at this time, but if the, I'll just be honest and transparent with you. If we do get the safety, there's a bill out there for $50 per student. I would like to add six officers and a sergeant.
Oh, that's awesome.
If the funding comes through.
Good.
That's what I've talked to Stuart about. Do we have write-over total officers? Can you give me a number of 30?
Write-down needs 34.
Total officers.
How many do we, we normally run three, we're always, we're always three or four behind, we're trying...
We are. They're swearing in three next week, or have we, I didn't know if that ceremony, who are those three we're recognizing next week at the Officer of the Year? Are they new officers? I'm sorry, Trey, I'm putting you on the spot.
Yes, ma'am. Officer of the Year, we have two officers that have been hired, have been working. One's already off of FTO and one's currently on FTO.
What is FTE?
Okay, what is FTO?
The training.
Field training.
Okay. They've been with another officer, you know, training with them.
I don't know if everybody knows what that means. But one's still in training, one's off, but they're...
So we do have open positions right now and we're talking about recruitment and how we can move forward with that and hopefully get those positions filled.
How many open positions do we have? And now we're recommending three more.
Well, with these new officers, we probably have another two or three open.
We have a total of 37 positions.
That's what I was thinking, close to.
So there's three that are open and then with the two, so that would leave one that would be open.
Does that sound right?
No.
Okay.
You've got 37 positions.
Approved.
You've got, approved.
All right.
Not including the ones that we just talked about. That'd be three more, correct?
That'd be three more?
That's including the two, so it is three.
We've got two hired.
That's including the 34.
That's in the 37.
So according to the budget on our FTEs, we budget for officers, just officers, not sergeants or any of that, just for officers, we have 37 in the budget. There's only 34 field positions when we ran budget, so now that he's hiring two, so that'll fill two of those three that's vacant on my list.
You're up to 36.
So then that'll be 36, so there'll be one position that's open to fill.
Right, then we're looking at three more.
And then we're all looking at three new ones, so we just added, so we're looking at four.
And how many sergeants do we have?
But those 30, when she's, when he's saying that 34, he's including sergeants.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we have 30, 28 officers, I thought.
We have Sergeant Morris, we have Sergeant Grace. Am I missing a sergeant? I'm missing Sergeant Lonnie Smith. Sorry.
Three.
Three.
Okay. We are understaffed for a district our size, so that's why we want to make that progression towards filling those positions, getting more coverage. Right now, we're covered at the high school. There's, of course, officers visible at the intermediates, but that's not on a full-time basis, so we'd like to increase that. From what you heard just recently about a substitute teacher being addressed in a middle school parking lot, those patrols are necessary and they're productive, so we want to continue those and increase those patrols and visibility at the elementaries.
Is the safety director, is that construction safety or are we...
It is. You know, of course, I've had Darla and Troy and Stuart meeting every Monday all year long, and they have worked diligently on reunification, metal detector drills, communication, finding me a product that I felt was in the best interest of our students, which is CrisisGo, and Cabinet reviewed that. There's just so much... There's just so much work to be done in that area, whether it's threat assessment, which we're going to be training staff on June 5th and 6th, whether it's safety audits and going through the buildings, you know, our friend Tom Swan does those for us, but he's a full-time school leader
Yeah.
Day and night. So I really need someone in there more often, looking at what those weaknesses are.
I think you do. Well, I agree.
So this is just something that other districts our size have, and I thought I could split the jobs up. I was trying to be cheap and give some to Troy and some to Darla and
As if they didn't have enough to do?
Right. So I've learned, and they've been very kind, and the ASCDs have taken on roles of communication of safety, and, of course, everyone will continue to be part of that. But I need someone I can say, okay, where are we at on this, and how soon will this be taken care of, and, you know, make it happen.
I know. In going around and trying to put these signs out for the election, finding out where they're going to be voting, Friday or Saturday, or Friday, I guess it was, we find some schools that you have to push a button to get in the front door, and then you have to push another button to get in foyer, but that's not true everywhere.
No, and we have, again, that'd be part of our safety audits, we have given the opportunity for campuses to install those as they request them. You've got to monitor those. You've got to have somebody waiting to hear that buzz and open it up. You know, in the past, and we'll just say, prior to CNAFA, prior to Parkland, we didn't see that as a friendly way to do business. But unfortunately, since those two, that's pretty much what we have to push toward and move toward. And so, what is it, Kevin, cost us to put those systems in?
Or Blue Wave?
Not Blue Wave. We have Blue Wave, but just the buzzer system that the campuses ask for.
Buzzer's are fairly expensive.
That's front door and into the office, both places, yeah. I think those, they're not unfriendly, but they're, they sure make sense, you know.
They're needed today.
They're needed today, unfortunately.
Such a different time now.
Absolutely.
Even our churches have to have some type of security. And when you think that our children are so vulnerable, and they don't know fear.
Right.
Yeah. Until it happens.
We can keep it that way.
I talked to a police officer the other night, and he told me a story about police officers in banks. And he said there was one right across the street from him that got hit every Thursday. You know who I'm talking about. And the only reason that his didn't get hit every Thursday was because they came down to his place, and there was a cop there. So they go on down the street to the bank or the savings and loan, or the stop and rob, and rob that place. Well, we don't get robbed, what we do is we lose lives.
Yeah.
And there, I don't care what we spend, my vote's going to go for safety.
Absolutely.
And those kids' lives, they're not, the entire budget's worth one child's lives, as far as I'm concerned.
Me, too.
And we are going to continue to make recommend, again, that's a focus this year, is the safety and the mental health. Of course, we've got to make some additions for the early college high school program to continue and get to its full fruition, and then special ed, because those numbers have grown so much. So those are all areas of focus.
You were talking about janitors and service. I had a friend that I've known since 1959, and he came over today to visit with me and had lunch. I hadn't seen him in years. And I took him to Kendrick Middle School, and we walked in, and he said, "This looks like a corporate office." It was so clean. And I said, "Well, you, one thing about our district is," I said, "whether the building is new or 50 years old, they all look like this." He said, "You've got to be kidding me." I said, "No." Of course, it was quiet as a church because the kids were all in class. And he said, he graduated from Moore High School, he said, and he's alumni, so he goes over there, and he said, "I don't think there's anything like this in Houston Independent Schools."
No.
And he said, "I'm just amazed." He said, "Our schools are dirty and so forth." I said, "Well, our schools have always been known for this since I, since my wife was starting to teach here." They're just clean schools, they're pleasant, people come to school in the morning, the school is clean, there's not trash and graffiti, and I would notice the other day how well the grounds look, just manicured, and that says a lot. And those people do a good job, and we have a good reputation, I think.
It's important, we do.
We have some great people.